Okay, we'll get started here. Before we get going here, just like always, speak slow and write into the microphone. Renee, are we on?
It says we're live, yes.
Too good. Alright, we'll get right into our committee meetings, and the first one up is Streets, Sidewalks, and Lighting with Mr. Greer.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to bring the Water, Streets, Sidewalk, and Lighting Committee. Today is November 23rd, 2020. It is 6:00 PM in the Active Adopt Center. All members of the committee are present. All council members are present, and guests noted on my sheet. Topics of discussion: We've had no requests for legislation. Ms. Leeny's discussion. I just have one piece of information. Over the weekend, this street was a nix that went off about a closure for this week. My understanding is that this street's gonna be closed from Lincoln at Lincoln, and they're gonna be working on connecting the sewers to actual lines that they ring. And that's why that closure happened. Mr. Tracy, could you provide more information on that?
Yeah, so I talked to Ken Moore today. They're hopeful to have everything open by the end of day Wednesday, get everything open for the holiday. They're working with two crews out there to try to get that done. This would be, you know, one of the final stages. It would be the end of work on Fifth Street, besides some restoration, but would hopefully be the last closure that we would see through the end of the project. They know they're running out of time weather-wise as well, so they're really striving to get this thing finished up.
I do have a question about what's going on over there. I had a resident reach out, talked about a water shut-off notice or water notice. Could you provide more information on that, what that was for? Was that related to the project?
Yeah, so it was known that there was a conflict with the water line. It's in the plans. So they had to shut off the water line in order to reroute underneath the new storm. Because the pipe is 36 inches in diameter, that's the inside, so the outside's actually a little bit wider. You know, the water line's five foot deep, so at some point, they're gonna come into conflict, and that was known. It's just a matter of timing, when they're gonna take care of it.
Do you know if there's any businesses affected by that shut-off that has to happen?
There were no businesses, but I'm aware. It's just a block from Lincoln, and then if they had to drought back, it was just a block to the south. Otherwise, they were right in the intersection.
That's about businesses that I was concerned that they didn't. So just asking. Does anybody on committee have any questions about the project or Ms. Leeny's discussion?
No.
Well, I have nothing else. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make the motion here.
Motion to adjourn by Mrs. Angelo.
And I'll second that.
And seconded by Mrs. Frye. We are now adjourned at 6:03 PM.
Okay, next up is Environmental Health and Social Services, Mr. Gray.
Thank you, Mr. President. Environmental Health and Social Services. Meeting today, November 23rd, 2020. Time is 6:04. At the Adopt Center, members present, or members of council members noted, and also visitors noted. Today, we have no request for legislation. But we also have appointments, and with Board of Health, Mayor Joe Goss. What was his last name?
Soss.
Soss, thank you. I have a letter from the mayor. Please call for counsel confirmation of Mayor Joe Goss to the Board of Health to fill the vacancy of Josh Houghman. Her appointment will commence on January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2025. Also, we catch some questionnaires for you. Any remarks on that?
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I apologize. That letter is somewhat incorrect. She's currently on the board, so she can't replace it. She's currently on the board. If it is turned, this is reappointed. Thanks for the call, and December 31st. Her new appointment is starting to be recorded. My office is on board, and she's not able to replace it.
Just a reappointment?
A reappointment.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. So we'll track that home and say it's a reappointment, January 1st, 2021, through December 31st, 2025.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Uh, thank you. Mr. Mayor, Josh Houghman, is that thing still an opening on that?
No, I think that's your comment down there. He was replaced.
Thank you. If there's nothing else, I'll make a motion to bring our committee for appointment.
Ready? I'm gonna put discussion and discussion. Take a vote on that, please.
Aye.
Aye. And see, ready? And ready. That passes. Any other remarks? Alright. The meeting is up for the management discussion. You can move over to council members. Hearing none. Motion to adjourn, please.
And I will second that.
Alright. We adjourned at 6:06, sir, and that I will pass.
Okay, next up is Planning, Annexation, and Codes, Mrs. Engle.
Thank you, Mr. President. It is 6:11, Monday, November 23rd. This is the Planning, Annexation, and Codes meeting. All members of committee are present, along with all of council, and guests as noted on my sheet. Topics of discussion: We have a draft ordinance titled Amending Barberton Codified Ordinance. Chapter 670 Trees, Weeds, and Grass. Chapter 1422 Registration in General. Chapter 1444 Permits and Fees. Amending Section 670.02 Removal of Weeds by Owner or Occupant. Five Days Notice. Section 1422.04 Registration Fees, Insurance, and Section 1444.15 General Permit Fees. Because this is a late piece of legislation, we will have to, I have to call for legislation this evening to invoke Council Rule 702 to suspend Council Rule 302. Do I have a motion? I'll make that motion, Mr. Gray, just first. Second, Mrs. Colbert. All. All members?
Aye.
Okay, the first one, Section 670.01 Trees, Weeds, and Grass. I'm not gonna go into detail. I'm sure everybody received that, but I do want to just go through what we are currently paying and what the increase is. Right now, currently, it's $100 per hour per person using riding equipment. That proposal is $200. It is $75 currently per hour per person using handheld equipment. That will increase to $150. These are just all proposals. I'm gonna say increase, but they're all proposals. The new that they've added in Section E 670.1 is $100 for each piece of equipment. And the last is, the charge is $50 per property administrative and processing fee and provided to the court. That will go up to $200. The next one is 1444.15 General Permit Fee. This is the Electrical Inspection Regenerized. And presently, it's $30, and it's increased to $50. Now, this is where a meter has been removed, and the electrician has to come back and pay it. You know, like maybe, you know, something's wrong with it. So that's what happens. The next is Registration Fees and Insurance, 1422.04. The HVAC Initial or Limited Work Electrical, the current permit's $125. This would increase to $150. The HVAC Renewal or Limited Work Electrical is $75. That would increase to $150. Sewer Layer Initial is $75 currently. That would go up to $150. And Sewer Layer Renewal, that's $50. That would go up to $150. Section E of 1422.04, it's additional, there's a late fee after March 31st of $75. And Section 670.4, I'm sorry, I'm going back up. There's an additional $100 for Certificate of Sale. The building department has to send a notice out to you. That's an additional $100. Okay, now, if there's any, and I'm sure, you know, we're gonna have three readings on all of this, because we wanted an open dialogue where everybody can, you know, read this and ask about the different amounts, and, you know, give their two cents on what they think, if these are too high and too low. We just have to remember, we're not robbing somebody's pocket to give us credit, you know, we're not. We're just trying to raise these rates a little bit more as they have, you know, in comparison with other districts and other cities. So I can open this up to Mr. Tracy, and you can ask him any questions, and then we can proceed.
I'll provide a couple of pieces of information and where this is coming from. So, you know, through the years, we've always maintained vacant properties throughout the city, along with all the city properties, including city vacant properties and city parks, road sides, all the, you know, all the different things that the city's responsible for. What the problem is, is that we end up, you know, we're taking care of a lot of vacant properties that cut into time where the city should be taking care of the city's own properties and city responsibilities. So, the reason that we're asking for these rates to be raised is that we don't want to mow these properties. That's what it comes down to. We want there to be incentive for these people that own the properties to mow their grass. You know, and this original proposal actually started out, where it sits right now, would come up to about maybe 800, 825 bucks to mow your grass. Right now, I mean, as proposed, right now, it's sitting around like 3 something, 350, depending on the number of people, the amount of equipment, on the time it takes, all that kind of stuff. So, although it seems like a lot of money to mow your grass, it is, and that's on purpose. That's by design, because we don't want to mow other people's grass. So, the whole goal is, is that they will take ownership of their own property and take care of it. But in the case that we do have to go mow it, keep in mind a few things, you know. Landscaping companies are mowing grass frequently. They're mowing it often. They make their money on volume. How many times do I get to mow your grass? So they didn't charge it 40, 50 bucks, so I understand that. We mow it two, three times a year, you know, and it has to be at minimum eight inches before we even start. Sometimes they're two or three foot long, so there's a lot of costs associated with that, with equipment and time and the wear on things. We would, you know, we include all those items, wages, court of field mowing rights, plus the administrative things that have to take place, and the person that has to go out and look for the lots and tag the grass and do the paperwork. I mean, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes as well. It doesn't just affect one department. It affects a number of departments. Things can make it to my office at times. So, I mean, that's the real, that's the generality of it. Isn't so much to raise the fees from a revenue standpoint, it's more to try to put the workload back on the owners of the property.
That's the thing. It probably would be, you know, a lot cheaper if you had a piece of property in town that you just hired them. A lawn service would come out and cut that maybe every month or follow the date however you set that up. It's just, as I'm sure people, everybody in council got a letter from the Aspen Local 265, and the grass weed violations last year was 275, and this year is 391. So it is taking a lot of time away from our employees to have to cut your neighbor's yard because the landlord doesn't cut it or something like that. So, very well put. Does anybody have any questions for Mr. Tracy?
Uh, Mr. Angelo. The cost of this project versus revenue, do we have an estimate on how much money we would generate through this? Or?
So, it's not, I mean, it's generally, it's generally double or a little bit more, I mean, than what we're doing now. So it'd be like 60, you know, 60% above and beyond that. So, I mean, let's say we, if we, I don't know, I'm just, I'm generalizing here. If we did $50,000 in special assessments to the county before, we'd be looking at over 100 now. But, that's if we did the same number of lots. The hope would be that we're not doing that many lots. Maybe it would end up just balancing itself out. We don't know. It depends on how it would affect the number of lots that we'd have to mow.
Isn't this kind of taking of?
I'm sorry, I can't hear you.
You're right.
The consideration is the wear and tear on our equipment at 12 inches, 14 inches high grass. It's not, I mean, our equipment's being abused when you're doing it that high.
So there's an obvious wear and tear in the equipment, and that's why we have to use, you know, 35 horsepower tractors, flat ones, you know, we're not using off-the-behind motors and zero turns, because they're not built for that type of grass damage. But I want to stick to the main reason. I mean, of course, it's great to recoup our costs, and that's important. But the main thing is, we're mowing other people's property, which is their responsibility. You know, it's important that we, you know, number one, this will help hold them accountable. And it also frees us up to do the things that the city should really be doing. You know, I shouldn't go have to mow John Smith's grass when I could be on Second Street, you know, patching potholes or doing something else. So it makes a big, you know, it could make a big difference in time and. Good.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So, I'm just wondering what the repayment rate is as it stands. As it stands, I guess it's kind of a twofold question, or maybe a threefold question. And you mentioned 375 lots they cut this year?
No, it said 390. The letter that was sent, the local, it said currently through November 23rd, 391. Compared to last year, 275.
Okay, 391. So, 391, are those lots above and beyond the one footer city owns that we are from?
I don't know exactly what they have. Never mind, the inclination is to say yes. Just going to some of the history of the numbers of lots that we got.
Okay, I was just curious.
And it's obviously down this year a little bit because of COVID.
And then, so, are a lot of those owned by banks and things, and what do you, or they usually pay? Is there a limited amount that they will pay? I'm just asking, I'm just curious.
Yes, so if there's certain places that are registered, not everything's vacant. You know, if they're registered as vacant properties, there's things that we can pull out of an already, you know, a bond that's already sitting there. It's just, it's direct payment right to your bills. Now, a lot of these could just be, in general, just negatively, just not taken care of.
Right.
It's not vacant properties. There's just not all of the city code. Is what it comes down to.
Because vacant properties, they have to register, and they have to have a bond, and that's what we pull from that.
Yeah, so that's an immediate, it's not a special assessment for a vacant.
Right, okay.
This would all be lumped together, you know, in September, in terms of the county, all these.
So what is typically, do you have any idea what typically our repayment rate is? I mean, if we can't collect $350, are we gonna be able to collect $850?
So I don't know. I don't. I don't know, I don't know the answer to the question.
I'm just curious, because while the theory sounds really good, that it's gonna make people help tangle and help to cut their grass, I think people just, I don't think they might.
Well.
I think the first year, they might not, at my point, I see a difference. But actually, given the assessment for the first time, it's probably gonna make a difference.
Right.
Because they're gonna have to pay the tax.
No, no, I, I, I just, I'm just curious what the repayment.
We have sent the property taxes. We just don't get that money back for another year.
But that's something we can look into. This is that one.
I'm just curious, Mayor.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's a valid question. That's assuming that people, once it's assessed, they do pay their taxes.
Yeah.
So we may not get it at the next tax, let's say, February, when the assessor, council assessor for the county, they may not pay it, maybe, so we will get it, go out, maybe we'll get the next one. So it's hard to pinpoint that we assessed it in like 2018 and we're gonna pay $200. We're gonna do a piece of it, so it's kind of a hard topic.
And then some of these too, that are assessed, we don't know if they're behind on their property tax, they don't pay their property taxes.
Well, that's, I guess that's kind of like, we start at one point, do we, then we end up with these houses, then, with these properties that have astronomical property taxes, that, you know, property taxes eat hot up to actually sell. So I guess, just, I'm just looking at more of a neighborhood deterioration by?
Well, that's why we cut the grass. So it doesn't, you know, we can't go out and cut it every week or two weeks, but we try to get out there two, three times a year to cut that grass. And, you know, no, they don't want to go through the assessments. They don't want all this paperwork. They don't want to say some economy, wait for a year, you're gonna have to get that money. We want them to cut their own grass, take some responsibility.
Oh, I completely, I completely agree.
Yeah, so that's just, you know, you can't pinpoint, I mean, I wish you could, I wish you not only go and they have to cut the grass. But, and we're not emptying their pockets, but fill our pockets. You know, we just want them to take some responsibility on their property that they have in town, whether they live here or they rent that, you know, take some responsibility. So, you know, we have to, with wages going up and with healthcare going up, we have to be able to, you know, be able to charge this so we can pay for the administration fees.
I completely understand. My concern is not raising fees at all. It was just, is it, I mean, $850 is a lot of money for to cut somebody's grass, and I just want to make sure, obviously, you want them to pay like, oh, they hear you, you cut their grass.
I mean, that's a lot of money. Hope they hear you, and then they go, I'm not gonna be assessed up. $825 on property taxes, I'll hire. You know, there's so many kids, there's so many companies out that they can hire, and that's, that's what more or less you're kind of pushing them to go ahead and hire somebody, because we don't want to cut grass. We don't want to be in the grass cutting business.
Mr. Frye?
I have a question for Greg, and it is on the first page of the ordinance, and it is about notification occurring only the first notice of the year. Meaning that now, we have been going out, they tag the grass, tag the grass.
Correct.
So, they are just wanting to do it once. And that means, hey, this is for the whole year. And every time that we have to mow, it's going to cost you $850.
Correct. So it just takes the inspector from the building department that goes out, wouldn't necessarily have to go out and tag all those lots. If the street department's out, they can just mow. Right now, they can't mow it unless it gets tagged, and then they have to wait at least five days before they can mow. Now, if they have listed those properties, and they know the guard had been given their first warning, they can just add to their route.
I think that's how Akron runs it.
That is how Akron.
Yeah, because we had a meeting like years ago, and that's what they, that's what they said they did. And therefore, you cut out the tagging.
Right, and that's a lot of administration. We go out one time to tag it, and then they go another time to tag it. You know, that work in between to help them, you know, to make them understand you need the grass cut, that's just taking a lot of time away, and we have, we just don't have that many employees anymore. And we just have to get just a little stricter with that, you know. We don't want to pay the $825 as a social property taxes, then hire a landscaper to cut your grass. That's very simple. Mayor?
Yeah, so a couple of questions that we hear complaints we get each year, with two of those points. There's two lots that are both overgrown. You just can't, you cut this one, why don't you cut the one next to it? Because we're getting tagged now, it's still that time period. So, you cut the one, you leave, we'll cut others, but we leave that one there. So that will help, when one knows, that respects. The other complaint is, you're letting this park get overgrown, the city property get overgrown. You need to cut that stuff near about non-city-owned property. Until you're really next to non-city-owned property, that's something, and most of the concerns there. So yeah, our great note, our job is to take care of city-owned property. But there's a statement in health, we wanted to take care of these non-city-owned properties. We want to make sure that we reduce our cost, because tractors, lawn maintenance, grocery area are not cheap. Like you said, everything is going up, and I don't know if someone, that the property owners, they gotta take ownership of it.
And like I said, this is, you know, this will go through the readings, and any input, you know, at our committee, the whole meetings, or anything happened between that you could email, you know, Greg or the mayor, if you think the, you know, maybe it's not high enough, you know, the charge or whatnot. You know, please keep this open, so we can start the new year with these rates and feel comfortable about those. Alright. Do I have a motion to call for Mr. Gray?
I have a question. How do we notify the resident now? Is it just written notice?
Yes.
So what happens if it's just scenario, a property's owned by somebody that don't live here? Do we, we don't call, we don't send certified now, it's just a tag?
Just mow your grass.
I mean, I agree with it, they should know.
It's almost like a bait, you know, we're gonna lower it, we know you don't live here. And I get there, we take care of the property. They're rapey offenders, they're get the assessment, and they know.
They know, yeah, and it's repeat.
If you own a property, whether you live here or not, it's your responsibility to make sure the grass is cut. You know, there's really no excuse to say, well, I didn't know there was a notice. Well, you own a property and you live in Florida, it's not my fault. I mean, you need to take care of your property.
Right, it's where the city's taking care of their rental property or their property. You know, they need to let, you know, have an incident, you know, that once a year, where the contract's up, there's new people coming in, and I know exactly when they move in, because there's trash all over the place, they don't cut the grass or anything of that sort. Well, you know, they're told, you know, the building department, you have to maintain your property. Just because you don't live there doesn't mean you don't have to maintain it, you know, if it's in your name. So, that's what we're looking at right now.
Does this come from recommendations that was given to the department? Like the whole, is this like a complete, the whole rental program?
Yeah, yeah, I know personally, I've been talking to the mayor about this for a year or so, you know, increasing that. Just so we can cover, you know, our administrative fees. And, you know, every time the, you know, Aspen has her contract every three years, that goes up, you know, and if we don't raise any of our administration fees, then we're not, we're not, we can't hire them, but we can't do anything.
administration fees, then we're not, we're not, we can't hire them, but we can't do anything of that sort. So that's that's another thing. Um, when was the last time this was increased?
I'm not certain, but I don't know that it's been increased since inception.
I had that information, but I didn't. You know, like I said, we're not emptying their pockets to fill our pockets, you know, because we're a city, we can't make a profit, but we have to be able to pay the administration fees.
I do have one more.
Okay.
Uh, question about, a scenario question. Um, let's say we assess a property twice, right, so sixteen hundred dollars ish with the new.
Yeah.
And they don't pay, or they they rack up their their taxes, back taxes on the house and, um, this goes, we put a lien on it, or is it going, is that how that works?
I don't know that. I don't know the assessment part of it.
I don't know that part either.
How how does, like, you can assess the taxes, but what happens if they don't pay it and just, I know there's there's some properties that go through the system, that go to the land bank that had back taxes that comes back to us at one, at some point, not not all the properties, but there's some properties. Um, and then who, and it's just a wash, right? We lose that money.
Yeah, if the owner was going to sell that piece of property, then all that property tax has to be up to date. But I I don't know, I don't work.
I guess I guess you kind of touched on my question. So my question was my concern, and I guess I didn't, because I didn't know how to word it. Um, my concern with with it being that high is that they will grab up, re-cut, three lawn cuttings on top of maybe back taxes that they've had, they're just going to leave the property and then we're going to end up, you know how long it takes for the whole process of properties, we're going to have an abandoned property that is owed even more back tax that somebody doesn't want to buy because they don't want to pay the eight thousand in that tax taxes for it to be sold. I think that was my concern when I said about deterioration of neighborhood. I think we need to consider that when we, when we think about, I mean, I think eight hundred and fifty, I I'm totally on board with raising it. I just think eight hundred and fifty dollars is, seems like a a lot of money and may put us in a position maybe that we don't want to be in, particularly with the pandemic and a time when things are uncertain for a lot of homeowners. So I I just, I I that's 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 where I was coming from.
No, not at all. I I think what would be beneficial is the breakdown of what Mrs. Bevick was asked before earlier. What is our pay rate? How, what is the rate that we actually do get back?
If if I may, so Mrs. Bevick's point there, um, I don't think that the money is out of line because if we have to mow your grass three times a year, I don't think it matters if it's a dollar or a thousand dollars. You basically said, I don't care and we're mowing it anyway. Whether we get stuck with properties that don't pay their taxes, honestly, what's the difference if it was two hundred or eight hundred? They're not paying it. So we might as well have something higher because if if they made the conscious choice not to pay their taxes, then it's already got to that point where we are in a situation where we've remoted three years. So in the odd chance we can collect, great. If not, they've already made that decision that they're not mowing their grasses, they're not paying their taxes. So like I said, whether it's a buck or a thousand bucks, I think that's immaterial, so they might as well have the higher one.
I guess my question to that is, is, and I don't know this, so let's say a house, you can't ignore it, a house has ten thousand dollars in property taxes, okay, and it's, they it's foreclosed on, I guess. I guess it's, can you foreclose on that rate? I don't know for sure. But nobody else can, the next person, person to purchase that home, the taxes have to be cut up, so they have to pay those taxes to actually be able to purchase it. My concern is that we get end up with tax, uh, property taxes that are so high that people don't feel like the investors to purchase that piece of land or that property is worth it, and we're going to end up with things sitting there. That's that's my concern. And I, and maybe it's not a valid one. I don't, that was my, that was my question.
I would think if it's foreclosed, that's the banks problem.
Yeah, and Carla, they're going to end up suffering now. If they move out, they can't sell it, they walk away from it, they actually don't have to grow. We're going to have to cut the grass anyhow. But I think we still have to be responsible for them and we don't want any of our constituents living next to something like that. So we do have to cut that grass.
No, I I'm quite agree. My my just a question about just using foresight as to.
Mrs. Miller.
Thank you. I think what we really need is the data, it's my experience in the prosecutor's office, is the deeds are not owned by residents, deeds are not owned by people. They're owned by corporations and they're typically owned by corporations not here. So you're you're not, they're owned by out of state, either people or corporations. And so they're not, you're you're never going to get a response to to Mr. Greer's point. The notice is going to, so a perfect example, we're dealing with another issue that I talked to you today about. We're we're sending notices on a house to D V C R Incorporated in South Carolina. They're never going to respond. The judges are going to get very angry with us because we're going to have a very difficult time getting them to court. And it's just good, everything just keeps piling up and piling up and the neighbors have to sit next to it and they're frustrated, they're frustrated with Mrs. Bevick, they're frustrated with me, they're frustrated with the building inspectors, they're frustrated with everyone because they're they're living with it on a daily basis. And I, from our perspective, from our perspective, there isn't a high enough fine that you can put on that property to get them to move. They they literally just don't care.
To my point, what's the difference between two hundred and eight hundred? They've made the conscious decision to ignore it.
Yes, Mayor.
And then also, kind of to that point, and I get both sides of the arguments. The county does have repayment programs. Aren't we taxized? There are programs. Probably with ten thousand dollars behind the taxes, there's other things going on. So it's just not the grass, there's other things going on and most likely the house has not been kept up to standards and things like that. But if if, you know, we're not out there when it's nine inches tagged, you know, it's it's feet. And, uh, so, but we have to set some kind of standard. Um, but, you know, if we're out there, we'd be work of people, um, trying to get things done without creating too much hardship. There's a back taxes of like ten thousand dollars, there's other things going on. It's it's kind of out of the way now to the bank's hands, the county's hands. There are programs available.
We have some nice houses, um, well, I'm just going to say in my neighborhood, two nice houses, one we couldn't even see because the trees and the weeds were above the house, it's a small pink pot. And planning department really helped with that and whatnot and, um, it was a vacant house and they, the owner of that, which was a company, like Mrs. Miller said previously, that they were out in California. So they took pictures and sent it over to this company in California and said, oh, my gosh, they hired somebody to come in and cut everything down and kind of spruce up the house and it sold. I had two houses like that that sold really quick. But it does pay a couple, two, three years, do all the paperwork and everything of that sort. So, um, um, you know, this, I have to agree with Mr. Heidi, you know, it's like I said, we're not trying to fill empty their pockets to fill our pockets, that's not what we're doing. It's just that three hundred and ninety-one grass weed violations right now, as of November twenty-third, you can tell that the twelve guys in the street department and the other ones in the parks, this is what they're doing, they're cutting grass. And, you know, um, and the equipment, the equipment is so costly and breaking down constantly. So, and I know that from the parks department, you know, the landlords are so old and whatnot. Um, so, uh, this is, like I said, this is first discussion. I think it went very well. Anybody else has anything to say? Mr. Gabbard?
Yeah, my biggest complaint I've gotten so far is councilman of the streets and also big, big properties, long grass. I think it'd be great to do this, go enforce it more and get more strict with it. And also, like Mr. uh, the mayor said also, he also run up where, go come tag this yard two lots over, they skip that lap, they'll call him like, they were just there, why did you waste your taxpayer's money? Like, you got to tag it first. This way we follow acting laws and do the words, the department have a list. So we won't have that issue because people with understanding rules and laws behind.
I know.
So this way, it's less stressful for us, it's less stressful for the street department, less stressful emailing service director about that complaint. But we probably, this passage goes that way, would save us so much time and energy also.
I agree with you and the equipment, the use on the equipment too. So, yeah, I I it's something that, it's probably been everybody that's sit on council, it's been probably their number one problem. And this is one way we have to, you know, head head on, kind of get resolved one way or the other.
Mr. Greer?
Mr. Greer?
So, um, thanks Chair. This is just a question, forgive my arrogance, or ignorance, right, bigness in this. Let's say there's a property, a billable property that does have five thousand, six thousand dollars in back taxes. And so we're selling, if it does come back to us with high taxes, like we do end up getting it with assessments on it. And when we get it back, like let's say a developer wanted to come in and build on it, I don't think any person would want to pay that much in back taxes just for a built a lot, but more realistically, a developer coming in saying, do you have any available lots? Um, do we have a program to wipe out those property taxes for like a developer to rebuild?
Well, that would be some common ground, yeah.
If we issued it, are we able to redact or?
We we would lose out.
Well, I mean, we would, but we would get a developer or a new house.
Right.
Yeah, because we foreclosed on it, the Southern County hasn't told me I've been taking foreclosing. We foreclosed on, we could get that property, but then a property tax, when we get back from the county, they short us out a lot of money. So Southern's paying, there's just no property payoff. Now, our program with billable lots maxes out ten thousand dollars. So that's pretty cheap for a billable lot. So five thousand may be steel versus the the ten thousand.
Mr. Heidi?
Thank you. Uh, my last point would be with grass and weed violations of three hundred and ninety-one. When I see that, that's, I'm just going to say it's an hour to mow a lot. That's three hundred and ninety-one hours our people are using, which to me translates that eventually that will go to against three hundred and ninety-one overtime hours because they still have their job to do. So for every one of those three hundred and ninety-one, I look at that as that time, one and a half, because we still have to pay our people when there's a pothole that needs fixed, when something's broken. But we wasted their hour and their time on private grass. So I do believe they should be paying quite the premium because when a water main breaks, if they wasted our man-hours on their private lawn, we're the ones eating it out of the general fund. So this premium is perfectly fine by me.
Yes, and the letter that was, uh, sent to us from the Asmi Local two sixty-five, um, um, that is something that, you know, is kind of true to my heart because I I know, um, they don't want to cut the grass, that's not what they want to do, you know? I mean, these big boys like using big machines, you know, and stuff of that sort, they don't want to cut grass, that's not what they want to do, but they do that, you know, because that's part of, you know, their job description. But, um, um, you know, what I've seen over the years where, um, employee rate has gone down from, gosh, at one time we might have had thirty-eight, forty people just in the street garage and now we have twelve. You know, and they don't want to cut grass, you know, so. All right.
I just have one, one request. Um, is there any way to get the data on, um, the, if the, that's three hundred and ninety, because it is not clear here. If those three hundred and ninety-one grass and weed violations are indeed other people's property or if they're city-owned property, if if those are included in that number because it it doesn't say. So I don't know if that's just all grass and weed.
Yes, I can get that.
How can there be a violation if they're city-owned?
Yeah, they can't be city-owned, they have to be in property.
There can't be violations if they're city-owned, right?
Correct. I didn't write the letter, so I have to look into it.
Okay.
We can confirm, we can confirm that.
You guys think about it that way. I just know that, um, we have a lot of lots that the city does own that don't get cut and I didn't know if that's part of the grass.
I don't think that's part of that list, but let's, I think it's good to get to confirm it to make sure you have the right information.
We do not, we do not have any violations. Absolutely.
No, I know that. Yeah, I know that. What I'm saying is.
I do, I wasn't looking at it like that.
I don't know how they ran it before. I do want to.
Okay, getting back to the grass ordinance title, amending property codified ordinances, do I have a motion to call for this piece of legislation?
I'll definitely.
Mrs. Colburn?
I'll second.
Mr. Greer, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And the second, the second piece of legis, uh, the grant orders we have is titled, amending barter codified ordinances, chapter fourteen seventy-eight, rental property registration program. And this is amended section fourteen seventy-eight point oh eight, registration, um, required. Um, and because it's a late piece of legislation, um, um, do I have, um, call for legislation to invoke Consulor seven oh two to suspend Consulor three oh two? Do I have a motion for that?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Greer?
I'll second.
Mrs. Colburn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, um, now this. I'm going to read like I did before, the registrations, the the theme, the table and the wording. Um, currently, um, registration, rental registration is forty dollars. Now, this is per unit, per rental, that's forty dollars, that would increase to a hundred. A registration update, which means if somebody had to come in and change something on their information packet, um, that was a ten-dollar charge, um, the proposed amount is twenty-five dollars. A late registration, um, that's an addition. That would be, it was twenty-five dollars, now it would go up to fifty dollars. And additional units in between that one-year period, um, it was twenty-five dollars and the proposed amount is forty-five dollars. Section A, registration is required on a form provided by the building department under the following circumstances. Number one, all rental units that the owner owns or that the operator operates no longer than it was January first and that's going to, that would be changed to March thirty-first of each year. And, um, in section H, the very first sentence would be eliminated and the the addition, the new sentence would be, if the rental registration is currently at twenty-dollar rate, it will remain at the twenty-dollar rate unless there is a violation or a change of ownership. Upon the occurrence of a violation or change, the ownership rate will will be increased and remain at a hundred dollars. So right now we have some renters that are, um, um, take care of their property, they don't have any violation. So instead of them paying the current rate of forty dollars when they renew this every year, they get a twenty-dollar rate. Um, and that's kind of like an incentive for them, um, that they keep up their own property. And, um, so that's what that that difference is there. And that's.
That's for good or any more, it's going to be with this amount.
Yeah, it is. Then, Mr. Tracy, do you have anything to add to that?
You want me to go?
Yeah.
Uh, I have a presentation together that addresses this and some others.
Okay.
So I can wait if you let me know.
No, go ahead, go for it.
Can anyone see this? Will you turn my screen over a bit?
I don't want the lights on, key light.
I'll be up here, the front light.
Oh. And now it's on.
He's wanting the back one then.
Oh.
Yeah, that's.
As I've mentioned the last few weeks, we've listened to the council, we've listened to staff members, we've listened to residents and business owners. And this kind of goes in line with enforcement, with neighborhood redevelopment and, um, working to get the city better, so. So whenever we do something like this, we always ask, what do we want, how do we want this to affect the city? What do we want the city to look like? So we always look at it as a project, where are we now, where are we going and how do we get there? So again, we listen to council, staff, homeowners, businesses and, um, so two things we'll talk about is neighborhood redevelopment. This is not general fund money. So these are line items, rental registration, vacant property, those things are non, you're not past general fund. And the income tax, this one that we've talked about in the past. So on the rental registration, again, non-general fund, uh, money. So on the rental registration, again, non-general fund, uh, money. So as Councilwoman Angel said, the proposal is to take it from forty dollars per year to a hundred dollars. Um, this was originally planned actually, then the rental registration was passed, um, but then it was changed out to forty. Um, the registration update, the late registration, additional units, uh, based in period, all being changed. Uh, as mentioned, the caveat to this is the grandfather clause, so if you're at a twenty-dollar rate, you stay there. Um, we don't want penalized landlords or, excuse me, landlords for following the rules and being good landlords, and we've got a lot of great landlords in the city of Barden. Um, the twenty-dollar grandfather clause goes away if there's a violation, you go to a hundred dollars, but if there's a change in ownership, you go to a hundred dollars. And a hundred dollars is not out of the realm for any stress-related maintenance nation with other communities, what they just choose. So, if this passes, upon passage of this legislation, this is what the commitment is of the city, we will hire additional classes in the building department, there's currently one, uh, who does, uh, the tunnel work, and he's not there, his work's not being done. So this is very much needed, and actually, we asked the building department staff, what do they want? This was the top of this. Also, a second, another property maintenance inspector. Um, so I've listed what they, they currently do, or what this could be used for, to ensure the registrations and paperwork could be filed and be current, um, so I don't need to read that to you, but, um, the better enforcement of the rules and regulations throughout the city. Um, and then this is important because, like I said, the funding, these property maintenance inspectors and staff members are paid through different funds, so there's a little bit of their salary from general fund, a little bit from vacant property, a little bit from rental, so if we raise the fees, we'll be able to increase our manpower to be more efficient and effective in our neighborhoods. We will conduct exterior inspections, um, and this is what we focus on with exterior inspections of the house, health, safety, and communication. We'll conduct interior inspections, um, we'll focus on sanitation, heat, light, ventilation, uh, et cetera. Um, down the bottom, number, uh, letter D, technicians and inspectors will be assigned zones within the city. This is key to this program. Right now, though, the inspectors and technicians are complaint-driven, so theoretically, it happens quite a bit, an inspector could have a case in the north side, it's out, and then after the travels to the far west side, it's out, and then there's a complaint on the east side, so they're all a little crisscrossed. This will, we'll give defined zones, so now they can be in a set area, and that's their base, so to speak. They get to enforce all the rules and regulations that are on books for that area, really take ownership of that area. Um, so more concentrated effort and accountability by the staff as well. And then at the end, uh, E, I read the neighborhood program, so if this passes, let's say January first is the start date, uh, within ninety days, I'll provide the public and to council a enforcement and enhancement, um, neighborhood redevelopment plan. So this will be top to bottom, um, what the plan is moving forward and how we're gonna do this, and, uh, you can talk about growth, uh, this is what we've been looking at, um, growth in our community, growth in our neighborhoods, and neighborhoods, I said it all, say all the time, neighborhoods are the fabric of our community, without strong neighborhoods, we don't have community. So we want to make sure that we're doing that, so I'll have this neighborhood, uh, reforming the program together. So the question we may have is, well, why not? Why not? Why did this happen before? So a little history, when I first became mayor, like in two thousand twelve, we had a difficult time having reliable vehicles for our staff and building department. Old police cars, and then police cars are, the building department gets what they are paid, um, maybe a car from the tow yard or something like that, didn't have a lot of reliable vehicles. Over the years, we've been able to add to our fleet, we've been able to, uh, really correct that, we're not a hundred percent there yet, but we're, we're really close. Um, then we had some personal issues, some people left the nutrition, we had some people with some, uh, serious medical issues, um, we had some people kind of resigned, and at one point, we had full-time clerk and two inspectors for the entire city. Uh, we are now with a full-time CPO, full-time clerk, and then you've got, uh, four property maintenance inspectors or technicians. So you can add to that, we'll really pick this in high gear to be able to, um, clean up the neighborhoods and put this, this program forward. Um, some of the other items, um, rebates and assistance programs, so we currently have a paint rebate program, it started out as a homeowner-only rebate program, paint, um, working with landlords, we were able to create a program for landlords, uh, to, for paint rebate. We started thinking, how many people are painting their homes today versus, uh, aluminum siding or vinyl siding or something? So, working with our department staff to find out what the needs are in the neighborhoods, creating other rebate programs. The goal is to fix the roof, to fix the, the corners and downspouts, let's get it done. So whether it's, uh, creating a program based on need, from you, for the inspectors and staff, uh, we can do that. Um, we'll provide information to property owners about all the funding assistance programs, uh, we currently have sidewalk replacement programs as well. I-Works is a software program that we purchased last year, uh, we purchased it because the former.
It wasn't last year.
Software program was discontinued, it wasn't being used anymore, wasn't supported. I-Works provides a lot of data and analytics, we can always add to I-Works other features, but that comes at a cost. So ultimately, the goal is to say, through the property maintenance violations for this area, this zone, this ward, this neighborhood, these are the police calls, these are the fire calls, these are the nature of the calls, this is the hotspot, so how do we rectify the issues of that hotspot? Um, and then we talked to a lot of, uh, homeowners, they want this type of thing, they want to be involved in cleaning up their neighborhoods, because that's the number one expenditure, the number one investment. Um, we are looking at inspectors working more in the field, so having calculus in the car, so instead of going out and writing a ticket, going back to the office, typing out a letter, sending a letter, do it right from your car. Therefore, they're more efficient, more effective, they're in a certain area, and they are taking ownership of that. So that's the rental registration, um, and what the need is for the money, uh, and the increase, the accountability, and how that money's gonna be spent. So, moving forward is the more general fund discussion now, if you want to wait for that. Can you wait for that, if you want to talk about this one?
Um.
Councilwoman Angel, can I add to that?
Um, well, I, I think that's pretty well self-explanatory, do you have any questions about this that, since the mayor has it out, Mr. Greer?
Well, I, I, it's not necessarily so much about this, but the fees and stuff associated with.
Okay, okay, you can open that up.
Um, what would be the revenue increase if we didn't raise this? This would be a known figure currently, correct? Like, if we were to raise this, we would, we, we should know that.
Right, as, yeah. Well, I guess once they register, um, then we'd have a pretty good idea because some might be coming in during the year too, um, can you tell us something?
I believe it was approximately a hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Yes.
Would be the difference?
That would be the difference.
The difference, yeah.
So that's, what do we make now?
Right now, it's, well, it depends on how things are caught in finance, but it's about seventy, seventy-five thousand a year, it was all in the budget previously.
Two thirty?
Yep, so, so we also looked at, you know, if there was just rental registration, like specific on its own, where it was like its own department type of thing. But the problem is, is, um, and it's happened over the years, is that used to people start to develop niches. So then if you have, um, you know, an inspector, a rental inspector goes out to Wonder Lake Avenue, well, a property maintenance inspector could go out to Wonder Lake Avenue too, now you got two people on Wonder Lake Avenue, and then maybe someone else is out doing grass, and they're going to Wonder Lake Avenue, it's just extraordinarily inefficient. Um, whereas, when you, when you do the zones, and that person can be one person, can do their, um, their own rental registration, their own rental inspections, they can do the grass in the street, they can do the engineering inspections, they can do the property maintenance, all, all in their own areas. So, that's where, you know, the, the addition of the employees, you know, based off of the passage of something similar to this program, is how we can make that work. Um, in its current, in its current state, I don't know that we have the capacity to, to do all of those things that are within, within the program, that, that need done.
So, we think that one-fifty will cover the two additional?
Yeah, that's it, I mean, one-fifty, I mean, again, it's gonna be split with other funds.
But it would be not out of general fund money in this instance.
Just a separate line.
This would, the, I, um, just, I was asking, just make, a better idea and make sure that's a self-sufficient program, uh, funded by itself, as far as additional workers and stuff, um.
Yeah, I mean, the problem becomes, we have about thirty-four housing units that are registered, so let's say that goes down, well, now there's less people paying into it, that's where it becomes, it's inefficient.
Um, and what, I'm sorry, um, what is our current status of the rental registration program? I know we had a hiccup in it, and, was it last year, earlier this year?
Yeah, I'd be able to be more specific, I don't know what you mean.
There wasn't all, everything wasn't transferred over correctly, uh, from the old system to the new system.
Oh, okay, the addresses and all that?
Yeah.
So, yeah, you're gonna see, as we go into the budget this year, that we were able to account for a lot more, for a number of properties that we weren't able to in the past. Um, as far as, um, getting the, the information worked out in the software, we upload all the parcel data information into the software so that it was all current, you still always get someone get kicked back because they're PO box or it's some place in Florida or something, but we've worked through all those as well, sent those back out, um, so there's been a significant increase over the last couple years, just based on, um, the, you know, just being more thorough, and the addition of the clerk to help go through these things in the future, because the clerk that we have now is not just doing running arbitration, I mean, they're running the department practically, um, they're doing, you know, thirty different things a day. Uh, so by having someone, um, you know, by having another person to office to share some of those responsibilities, he would come out of some of this stuff, you know, it would only help further those, those, you know, successions that we had.
Uh, I just got one more question. Um, and you, you answered a lot of what this question is, but what measures are we putting in place to make sure that all landlords are playing by the, the same rules? Some landlords don't register, um, will the new clerk position be able to, or is there a, a program that we have in place or an idea of how we can make sure that every landlord in the city is playing by the same rules?
Yeah, so, you know, you can add to this too, Mayor, if you want, but, um, you know, I think a lot of it is, you know, within the, the section of rental registration, it calls for biannual, uh, inspections. So if you look at the original biannual inspection checkers, it's ten pages long, it'd take you two hours to go through someone, to go through a rental interior and exterior, you know, we've remodeled it to be, you know, one page, and to hit all the safety-sensitive areas that really need to be, really need to be attended to. So, you know, with the addition of these funds, and the addition of the employees, and hopefully this is just the beginning, that, you know, eventually we could roll it into a, you know, property maintenance technician in every ward, and it'd just be designated, um, that they would be accountable for all the rental registration in the ward as well as the inspections, but I think the inspections would go along with what you're saying, like how do you hold the landlords accountable?
Councilman Greer, I'm sorry, so we've worked with the county on their database, um, where the property tax bill goes versus where.
Okay, that's, that's what I was trying to.
And we also use our utility, our water bill.
Right, that's okay, yeah, like how do we make sure that every landlord is, is registered?
Right.
Well, some will slip through, but, you know, they're, they check the newspaper, you know, papers properties for rent, or something, so you can see a sign out in someone's yard, you know, this is for rent or what have you, um, so some will get through, um, it just always happens. We did have an employee, you know, a year, who's been out in the field, but spent a better part of the summer auditing the records, uh, and this is where the clerk could, could be there for it. Yes, we deserve different sources to verify.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Yeah, because when they, somebody who comes in and they have to register for the water bill, that kind of tags that right there, so we can kind of pay attention to that. Yes, Mr. Heide?
Uh, thank you, Chair. Uh, Mr. Heide, paint rebate for homeowners and landlords, uh, this is paid through that rental registration, is it available to any homeowner or just people that are registered to the program? Because my concern is, if it's available to any homeowner, somebody could take advantage of this program that has the means and is basically, doesn't feel like paying for it themselves.
So, it's, it's open to anybody, there's two different programs, one for homeowners, one for landlords. It's up to ten dollars per can, uh, up to ten dollars, ten seconds, a hundred dollars. Um, then you can take, uh, advantage of it, but most people don't use this, so, you know, you just fill out the application, you take a picture before, you take a picture after, you give us the receipt. Uh, so we typically put about three to five thousand dollars in the line item in the budget, and not a lot of people use it, um, you want to start, if we're asking for having a garage or house that's painted, here's some help. So, the stuff the landlord does, not all registration, the other stuff, the line item, that's, you're good.
Thank you.
So a hundred bucks could not be a ton, but, so.
It, it helps, let me tell you. Anyone?
I'll make the motion we called for this.
Mr. Dab, go ahead.
I think it's a great, great move for the city, I mean, right now the renters are paying extra, and rent is going up, um, again, landlord myself, landlord's about six fifty knots, one twenty-seven, fifty to eight, nine twenty-five in some, some houses, so a hundred dollars, two dollars is a big charge for the landlords, and they'll pay it, they won't see the other neighborhoods, you know, they cleaned up a little bit, this will help, you know, they cleaned up, this whole house they cleaned up, we'll get different people coming to town, you know, we want that, that image of opening this up to active city hospital employees or Amazon employees, you know, we want that extra image of higher, you know, you know, landscaping, you got a landscaping, there's siding, there's looking, uh, edge yards, edge sidewalks, we want that, the things that we hear choice. Uh, I met with Mr. Trevor last week in, uh, I consider Barden almost like Lakewood, the houses are so close to each other, and Lakewood has developed over the years in the housing part, I mean, I bought a house in ninety-six, uh, the house down there, I mean, it's a big difference from today, that neighborhood. The neighborhoods all combined, and each house, inspectors are strict, and we get new inspector in town, that goes to the houses, and we get really strict, people change, our landlord and I'm like, okay, this guy got discharged, last one cannot have his sign up right, and call a friend, I think it'd be great for the city if you follow this.
Yeah, I don't think that the, the increase isn't, it could be higher, we'll take some baby steps for the matter, it's a start.
I think you guys are doing the same thing for sure.
Well, there's some counties that have, it's two hundred dollars per year, per year.
I know.
I think these were just three, five hundred dollars.
Five hundred.
So.
Mm-hmm, yeah, that's what I said, this is, you know, this isn't a lot, uh, because, you know, if, if you have one or two rentals, okay, but if you have ten, fifteen rental, that's a business, you know, so, you know, that hundred dollars, um, um, it's, it's part of your business, it's part of paying taxes and whatnot, so this is a bit, um, thank you, Chair.
Uh, so this is one of the areas that I would say that we could afford to increase the fee, I don't think the fee's enough, whereas eight hundred and fifty dollars to cut somebody's grass, I think is outrageous. So that's just, that's just my, it would, I, I, I don't think this is an opportunity to really boost our building department, give them what they need, you know, inspectors, and I think that, I think it would be more advantageous, but that's not because, like, they can know their kind of whole life for money. I know this is a pregnant collection, so that's just, that's just matches them.
Yeah, but if you look at that, that it's, it, it's not, I mean, it was a hundred dollars per hour for person for writing equipment, it went up to two hundred, that's still not a, you know, uh, a lot.
I thought, Mr. Tracy said it was sixty percent of an increase, approximately.
Approximately, mm-hmm, but still, I, you know, that's why, we'll have more readings on this and more comments.
Yeah, I just want to comment, I think that this, I agree, I think this is an area that we could.
You know, we could, anybody that feels, um, that we could vote and we could increase this, or we want more, you know, the rental registration, you know, talk to the mayor, talk to Mr. Tracy, um, and that's what we're open for that, and so we can see what, you know, what we want, but we think a hundred dollars is, is, to me, that's a baby step, um, but it is a step forward, um, but, um, I mean, have a look at rental, most of rental is a business, so, um, but that's something that, um, we can talk about in the meeting, the whole meeting, or feel free to email me your comments or anything of that sort, we'll put it out there, and we'll see what the council wants to do, okay? Okay, do you have a motion to call for this piece of legislation? Okay, do you have a motion to call for this, please, for that to take?
I'll make a motion to call for this.
Mr. Greer, second. Second, Mrs. Coburn, all in favor? All right. I'm sorry, time is taking up so much of this time, I'm trying to get through this. The next that we have is a current piece of legislation, with Resolution One Thirty-Three Twenty-Twenty, titled Zoney Permit Moratorium. We had the first reading on that November sixteenth. I had talked to the mayor today, I talked to planning today, I talked to Mr. Tracy today, and there were no calls, no complaints, no concerns from any of those offices about the moratorium. From planning, though, we have, I had mentioned to you, there was two pending, and that would not be part of this moratorium. The one with the car lot, he's gonna hold his application, so even if he decides to go forward with some of this, you know, some of the requirements, he will not be part of the moratorium. And the storage unit, that's on hold, so he would not be part of that. But as, as of this point right now, we don't have any outstanding, we don't have any pending or anything of that sort. And I've not had any comments from any council people, or anything of that sort, so I will open it up to my committee, does anybody have anything on this, Mr. Greer?
Uh, thank you, Chair, I just want to let you know that I haven't had any feedback at, at all with this, and I'm hoping that we get another week, and by the time we can read it.
Right, I, I was looking at the calendar, and the second, our second reading will be November thirtieth, is that right?
Yeah.
Yeah, that would be November thirtieth, and I think, you know, that would be another week, and, you know, it's been out there for two weeks, and like Mrs. Miller did say, you don't have to go through readings on it, it's just to the point right now that this is a good stoppage, so we can start, without having, we have those two that are pending, that won't be part of that moratorium, but it's, it's something that we can push forward with, at the second reading, yes, Mr. Hyde?
Uh, thank you, Chair, I have not received any feedback whatsoever, and at this point, I'm hesitant to say that I would, given that we've already gone a week with no comment, if somebody were to try to apply next week, then, I'm sorry, they would have had ten days, and the age that you can get information anywhere, I would be comfortable suspending on the thirtieth.
Thank you.
I, I have had feedback from, from two people, and I'm not sure if one of them is being already addressed, and that's on the storage unit, I'm not sure if it's the same storage unit, is that, are you saying that that one is allowed?
That one, he applied for that, for a storage unit, it was the same one we're talking about, I'm not sure.
I don't, I mean, I'm sure that we hear, he's just named, he wants to wait until next year, yeah, he doesn't want, he wants to, it's, he had called the office and said that he'd like to wait, and not, you know, not submit, so they're gonna hold that, but.
He would be exempt from the moratorium.
Pardon?
He would be exempt from the moratorium.
Yes, those two would be exempt from the moratorium, because they've already applied or permit. The car lot, there were some things that had to be done, and he just didn't have the funds available at this time, so that's why, you know, he said, well, maybe, you know, next month, or, you know, maybe, so he would be exempt. And then the storage unit on Kent Street, he was applied to, but he wants to wait until the new year, so those two.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because he did, he did contact me, and was concerned, and I told him that I thought that he was wanting to be exempt, because I wasn't sure, I was in Kent Street storage. I don't know, I don't know, I know it was, he didn't want the name of the store, he didn't, okay, just go forward, I go with the Trevor, and he could have.
We're, we're talking about the same one, yeah.
The same one?
Yeah.
Okay. And then.
He's in agreement, he's okay with that.
Okay.
Because we've talked to him.
And then another gentleman, it just said that he was disappointed, just he had that he had down zoning, border, he said border zoning deals, years ago, when, when it was reworked, and they just worked around it. But, that, that was just, that's just simple, that's, that's the two pieces of info that I got, one was from the gentleman from the storage unit, and then someone, I, I, one of my neighbors.
Well, Karen, he, he left after he talked to you, he missed the call, the planning.
I, I told him to, I said, I think we need to just double check, because there was one that was mentioned, and, so, I, I advised him to call planning, so.
Okay. Now, appointments, next piece of legislation, appointments, we have a four-year term for David Nguyen, and I believe everybody got his resume in that. He has been on for fourteen years. I, I, I tell you, that's a commitment, that is a commitment, to be on one committee for that long, and to do a lot of follow-ups, and go to a lot of places, and talk to a lot of different communities. You know, this is a volunteer, and Mr. Nguyen just asks the right questions at the right time, and he is truly, you know, for the city of Arlington, and I would highly recommend him to a four-year term, starting January first, two thousand twenty-one, through December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. Do I have a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Medges, and second is Mrs. Coburn, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, Ms. Lane's discussion, the only thing I had was the letter addressed to the council members from local, asking the local two sixty-five, so, everybody has that?
Excuse me, he asked me to read that during citizens addressing.
Okay, all right, good, good, you could read that. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh.
It's more on the finance side, General Counsel.
Okay, okay.
Did we discuss contractor registration and de-energizing? The re-energizing?
Yeah.
You good on that?
Yeah, yeah, the.
I actually did not discuss that. I just have another question.
Okay.
My question is this, do we have a plan to get a method of payment online?
Yes, I'm working with three different companies right now.
Okay, I didn't know if we could do something similar to the, how we pay the water bill. And if we have the ability to accept money that way right now, or.
So we.
Because our building department isn't open, is it open to the public?
Right, so all the.
And everything is up online.
Okay, so all the payments can go through the finance department right now, through the drive-through window. We are, we're working on getting the payment processing part set up through the portal. We're vetting three different companies, we've done three different meetings with these companies, we're trying to pick the right, the right company, right, right now, we're, you know, finance has a system, utilities has a system, we're trying to incorporate one of those sense, like, systems, so we didn't have a third payment processing sys, system, but it's looking like we're gonna have a third payment system, because it has to integrate with our iWork software. So that, we're planning on having it up by the end of the year, and as well as instructions within the portal, to tell you from, in the, in the building department portal, when you, that you can do contractor registration, we're hoping to do rental registration, and right now you can do permits for tons of different things in the portal. Obviously, it, it was causing a problem with payment versus permit, so we're hoping to have that done by the end, by the first of the year.
Any other questions, something about the HPHC, those, I just read off what was, you know, what the cost was, and everybody's got to slip here, and like I said again, you know, the mayor and Mr. Tracy's open, to comment, and.
Just real quick, on rental registration, let's say this passes this year, we're gonna, if it's in there, give it till the end of March.
Yes.
For people to register. So when you talk about generating revenue, previously we could pay this year for next year, so trying to discern what was two thousand twenty versus two thousand twenty-one, could pass complications, so if we just move it forward, give the people a little extra time, and actually pay in the year that registration's formed, I would love that to be very helpful, so just want to put that out.
Mr. Man, for registration, maybe we're gonna also, you know, do the license burial, do a deal for two years, the license plates, maybe we can work out for the, someone landlord might like that, you could pay for two years, so pay a hundred a year, pay a hundred eighty for two years, some people might do that also, you put that in.
Yeah, that's something we can discuss.
Yeah, anyone else? Thank you.
That's if they're gonna keep their piece of property for two years.
Yeah, I know what they did.
But that's a point there. Okay. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
How many motion to adjourn?
Mr. Greer, first, second, Mr. Medges, and we adjourn at seven twenty P M, and I want to thank everybody that kept an open mind, and we'll get through this.
Okay, last but not least, is finance and personnel, Mrs. Frat.
Thank you, Mr. President. Is it averages? I don't know. Today is Monday, November twenty-third, two thousand twenty, the time is seven twenty-one, and we are starting the meeting of the Finance and Personnel Committee. All members of the committee are present, as well as all council people, all council person, and guests is no dummy chief. The topics of the session for this evening are requests for legislation, the first is a draft ordinance titled Appropriation Fire Department, and this is an appropriation in the amount of thirty-one thousand seventy-nine dollars from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the fire department capital fund of the general fund for the purchase of a complete air handling system. This was referred to finance from safety. As, it is my understanding that this, we cannot use COVID money for this, and this is not a grant, so if Chief personally would like to weigh in on this?
Sure, we had a energy efficiency study done earlier in the year, and at that time they determined that the current HVAC units that we had servicing at Station One were not working properly, and one of the most concerning things that they determined was the units were not exchanging out the air within the building. In essence, what it was doing was just cycling the air within the building over and over and over, so this caused us a lot of concern. The other issue was the lifespan for the units are anywhere between fifteen to twenty years of age, current units are twenty-five years old. And then finally, the refrigerant that was used in the units was phased out in early two thousand twenty. So all of these factors put together, us approaching the winter months, that's why we decided to move towards getting them replaced before we were put in a position of no return, for lack of a better description, so. The other added feature was the sanitization, which was an ionization unit that we looked at. Given that these are kinds of COVID, the ionization unit that we're looking at is one of the only ones that has been tested and shown to kill the COVID virus, so, again, all those combined, just seem like the time to do it, so, any questions?
Chair, I have a question. Yes. The fire station on State Street, how old is that, how old is that unit?
That station was built in two thousand and seven, so that was coming up on thirteen, thirteen years. That one we were able to retrofit, that was part of this package as well, we were able to retrofit that with one of the ionization units, so.
Does that help? Thank you, I didn't realize that was that old already, oh, crap. That's all, Chair.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Rob. All right, do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make a motion that we call for this.
Okay, thank you. Motion made by Mrs. Debeck, and seconded by Mr. Medges. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
It passes. The second piece of legislation that we have on the agenda, or in maybe tonight, is a draft ordinance titled Amending Ordinance Number One Seventy-Five Dash Nineteen-Ninety-Five, Emergency Reserve Fund for Public Facilities and Programs. This legislation is to increase the maximum amount allowed in the emergency reserve fund to two million dollars. Currently, the reserve fund maximum was one million dollars. Does anybody have any questions on this? Nope. Do I have a motion to call for?
I'll make a motion, I'll second it.
Motion made by Mrs. Angela, and seconded by Mrs. Debeck, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, the third piece of legislation that we have tonight is a draft ordinance titled Appropriation Law Department, appropriating twenty-three thousand dollars from the unappropriated item of the general fund to the law department's operating budget of the general fund. I spoke with Mr. Flaker today, and also Mrs. Miller, and she is going to explain this particular appropriation in her remarks tonight. Does anybody have any questions, or anyone waiting? I think we should just wait and get what Mrs. Miller has to say. Do I have a motion to call for this?
I'll make a motion that we call for this.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Debeck, and seconded by Mr. Medges. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
This also passes. Does anyone have any Ms. Lane's discussion for finance this evening?
I just got one question on that, why did you say eighteen thousand, and then twenty-three thousand and one?
Because it initially, it, it's actually two different appropriations, but then Jeremy wanted to put them all in one, so it's twenty-three thousand, eighteen thousand and five hundred, I mean, five thousand makes twenty-three thousand, so it's one appropriation, but it's for two different reasons. Mr. Hyde?
Uh, thank you, Chair, will there be direction others' comments about this?
She's going to, she's going to explain this, she's going to make comments tonight.
Oh, I thought she meant like, I'm sorry.
No, 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 she's, she's.
That's why it struck me when you called, whereas like, we haven't heard from you.
Yeah, no, she's going to, yeah, she's going to comment later. Any other Ms. Lane's discussion? That we have with the mayor's.
Jeremy has.
Oh, Jeremy.
I just wanted to bring up real quick, I don't know if anyone saw on the Barnum and Harold this past week, on the very back page, there was a little memo, just letting the residents know to be on the lookout for the Rita welcome letter.
Yes.
That letter is scheduled to go out December third, so the residents could, should be seeing it shortly thereafter, so I just wanted to bring it up to council, let them know that if you do get calls from residents, that welcome letter is going out December third, so the residents should be receiving it probably December fifth, sixth, seventh, somewhere in there, all the residents and businesses, so be on the lookout for that. I, I will get the city's income tax website updated with that letter and the information, so everything, conversion-wise, is still going really well with Rita, so that is good news. So we, and I also do know CCA is caught back up, so that is another piece of good news, so everything's looking good for the first of the year for the conversion over to Rita.
Thank you, Jeremy. Does anyone else have any comments? All right, hearing none, do I?
I want to review the rest of the presentation.
Oh, okay, all right, fine. Oh, okay, all right, fine.
Could someone take the lights? So we talked, a lot, everything we talked about so far is non-general funds, you know, rental registration, all of that, with the property tax levy, not winning at the ballot box. We still, we can't take this candy out of it. So CARES Act money is going to probably get a screw next year, but we still have to have some source of revenue. So obviously, there's no pending legislation in front of you tonight about this, but I need feedback. I appreciate the council members who come back, come in and give suggestions and talk to me about this, but I need more, so we all are on the same page. So I'm going to go through a couple of things here pretty quickly. So two things we'll talk about is income tax credit, which we talked about in the past. So those that were on council last year, or intended council, should we call that, there are such things. So on the income tax credit, the state law requires, you can read that, if you live in one community, you work in another community, technically, you have to pay both communities' income tax. State allows a provision, you can read the community that you live in, you do a credit, what that credit amount is, twenty-five percent, a hundred percent, fifty percent. It's up to the city council, they can change it. So Barbara provides a hundred percent credit to employees that live in Barbara and work outside their communities. So kind of two ways to look at this. So income tax credit cap, and we'll go into this, would not affect anyone working in cities, that or below what the cap would be, okay? So the first one is what we discussed in previous years, income tax credit rollback. So someone making fifty thousand dollars in salary, lives in Barbara and works in Akron, and I use Akron because that's a high income tax city at two and a half. They would pay one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars to Akron and nothing to Barbara if, unless there's an income tax credit rollback, we use fifty percent. They would pay Akron twelve fifty, but also pay Barbara five sixty-two, which is top five zero. And then you can do the credit rollback if you're above, so maybe seventy-five percent, maybe eighty-five percent, maybe fifteen percent. But I want to give an example there. The second way of looking at this is an income tax credit up to a certain amount. So same salary, fifty thousand, same community, Barbara and Akron. Let's say it's a credit passed by council up to one point seven five percent. An individual would pay Akron one thousand two hundred and fifty dollars, and credit Barbara up to one point seven five, and still be on the hook for one point five zero. They would pay Barbara two hundred and fifty dollars. So someone living here or working at Akron now doesn't pay income tax necessarily to Barbara, but they're getting the service. So if we, a second example for that credit up to phase would be one point five, they would be on the hook for three hundred and seventy-five dollars. So let me give some examples there. But we also have to remember here towards the bottom that a quarter percent of any income tax goes to the street resourcing fund issued aid versus the general fund. So, and this is the general, the general fund is the one that's hurting. So let me give those two examples. And at the very bottom, you can see it, two examples near us, City of Norton, City of Wadro, now programs like this. So if you live in Norton or Wadro, and you work outside of the community, you're paying both communities at some, some level. City of Norton also passed a, another tax levy, property tax levy, pay for firing and mess services. So they're paying even more. City of Akron, enough as an example, increased their tax rate to two point five percent with someone that paid earmarked for street resourcing, like so does us, but they still assess the rest. So some residents could be paying twice for the same resourcing. When we did our income tax increase, we stopped assessing property taxes.
Mr. Frath?
Yes?
Before you switch slides there, under the income tax credit up to, with the upsill of one point seven five percent, where it says to pay point, or half percent to Barbara, does that mean a quarter of that half, or half of that half percent would have to be earmarked for the issue aid? So theoretically, it would only be a quarter percent to Barbara's general fund. Thank you.
So yes, I have your permission.
Thank you.
Oh, Mr. Heidig? That would be incorrect. Even though a quarter percent is dedicated to the street capital fund, overall, income tax is two and a quarter percent. So it would actually break out to like eighty-eight point eight, nine percent going to income tax and eleven point one, one percent going to the street capital fund.
So it'd be same proportion of this?
So it's a quarter percent on the half a percent. Is that what you're saying?
Yes.
Oh, okay, thank you.
So this would be on the income tax side. So we're talking about assessments. The O R C allows us to assess for things like snow, ice, removal control. So I put some examples here, just using ten thousand properties in town, starting at seven dollars a month, and going to generate for the city, going down by fifty cents, three dollars and fifty cents. And we'll get into the reason why you pick this. But first question to council or publicly, well, we just voted on property tax, this would be assessed to property tax. We just voted on property tax levy in failure, so now you're going to do this. Some of the feedback I got from residents, so they voted no against it because it went to the general fund. It wasn't earmarked for one thing. And they, everyone has a reason why they voted yes or no. Some of the feedback that I got was, if it was earmarked for something, then I would feel better about it. If it was less expensive, I would feel better about it. So here's an option for less expensive earmarked service that we provide that, you know, may be in jeopardy if we don't have money to fund it. So it's a specific purpose, a set amount. And so also with this, this, let's say this passed, people who get assessed, we would start applying this in January, every month. You know, it comes to council at the end of July, early September to certify assessments in the county. So no one would pay in twenty twenty-one. It'd be certified by council, and then go to the county, and then the first payment would be February of twenty twenty-two. So why, why can we look at this? So to provide this service to, to residents, we looked at the leaf, snow, ice months, five months, October, February, employee wages and benefits, approximately four hundred thousand dollars. Dump trucks cost about a hundred and sixty thousand dollars each, currently need four. We purchased four or five of them over the last two years. We have some dump trucks from the nineties. So we put together a ten-year replacement plan, a fifteen-year replacement plan, and what we have to put away every year to, to get forward. Our truck maintenance, about twenty thousand dollars each season, salt, we average about a hundred forty-five thousand dollars a year. We pick up equipment, new tag in twenty twenty is about seventy-five thousand dollars. So we also put together ten-year replacement plan and a fifteen-year replacement plan converting to hogs. Also, with this cost, we typically transfer about half a million dollars on average to, from the income tax fund to the street fund for this purpose, no transfer in twenty twenty, which means we're significantly deficit spending without transfer. Fuel costs, our salt dome, our storage, the base is about a quarter million. If you recall, a few months, weeks ago, we passed legislation for, versus salt, there was an extra price, a cost to convey, helping to the dome. So if you get a clear span, they can just go back in there, belt it, it's a little cheaper. But every, every typical house, right? And that salt dome was built probably in ninety-five, ninety-six. So it's been rerouted a few times, but it's getting used a lot. Seasonals, you know, we could use seasonal employers to wear signs to, to work on sidewalks, things of that nature. And the third one at the end, tunnel sidewalks downtown. So there was a tip, tax increment financing program with the redoing of theater downtown. That program ended in nineteen. So this year and next year, this year moving forward, all the businesses along Tusk, from approximately Second Street by McDonald's down to Sixth Street by the VFW, we used to do the sidewalks, sold them and sold them, because they were paying more in property taxes because of the tip. Every year, we get complaints from other businesses saying, I'll pay more if you come to buy property. It wasn't for the tip. And the tip is a twenty, twenty-five year project, that ended. So if this, if we pass an assessment that we, that we can benefit the downtown shops by doing sidewalks, having seasonals, being able to have the equipment, you know, that, that's best for everybody. So, you know, the businesses outside that tip were not getting the benefit because they weren't paying for a tip for twenty, twenty-five years. So nothing I wanted to do today, but I wanted to get this conversation going. When we look at the future of Barbara, it's not difficult to have a better Barbara. We look at technology, operational efficiencies, internal reorganization of departments, employees, infrastructure, economic development, all those in the city, we spit out a better Barbara. So I want to get this conversation going. It's not a good conversation or a bad conversation to have that we need to generate more revenue. And the model that has been placed in front of us is tax breaks. But I wanted to look at the whole scenario, we've been, we listen to you, we listen to staff, we listen to business owners, residents, who've taken this all in. So a lot of things I'm going to throw at you tonight, whether it's the brass, it's rental registration, contractors, or general fund, what we need to make some decisions on this moving forward. So I'm expecting any questions on this, but I can take some. So this is kind of the first time, so if you've seen it, or you've visited it. So I'll end there, if there are questions I can take on it, it's not, obviously, my door's always open. Yes? Thank you. This question, obviously, put in there.
First, I just wanted to thank you for putting this together, and would council be able to get these slides digitally?
Yeah.
Is that it? But yeah, that was the question.
Mrs. Debeck?
Thank you, Chair. This is for the mayor, or maybe just a comment in general. Thing is, I am not opposed at all to the property tax. I know the taxpayers spoke, but I think they spoke for a few reasons, and I think moving forward, would we have the ability to put it back on the ballot at the next general election when we acquire the actual, like Mr. Flaker mentioned this evening, I think, that CCA test is all caught up? Mr. Flaker, is that correct?
CCA, yes.
They're all caught up. As we get better figures as to how we are going to fight climate, I think if we go to the, if we have those figures and we have a plan, how is, how is the school level passed? A school level passed is by saying, if this is in the past, we can't pay for buses, we can't pay for sports, we can't pay for latchkey. And so the parents that are then going to be affected make the decision to vote yes or no. So I don't think that a property tax should be off of this slide. I just, in my opinion, think that when we did it was not the right time because we didn't have the actual numbers. And that's just my opinion, and I don't know how other council members feel about that. But I don't think that we should dismiss that. I, I think that, I think that as we get the firm data, I think it would be an easier sell to the taxpayers. That's just my opinion, I don't know if anyone else feels about that.
If you recall, we had to vote, council had to vote by a certain date to put on the ballot.
I know, it was, it was not a good time, all the time.
Things changed night and day, several times a week, from the use of CARES Act, and a lot of CARES Act funding and all of that, so we had to get something going. The feedback I got was, I'm retired, free city government, just go to the general fund. I don't want it to do with this department, but I'm okay if it goes with this department. It's too much, I've worked for what I have, I don't want to pay this much. So I get it, and you know, what I said during the whole campaign was, if you truly can't afford it, then don't. I think that the feedback I got was that set for three years was great, people like that, even if they go to no against it. But if it's earmarked for something, I think that that's going to be a little different story. I just don't want any laps in service delivery, I don't want any laps to have unsafe vehicles. We'll go with first class.
Yeah, I also think a bigger concern, what was it also is, I mean, let's, if we really are realistic, we don't know exactly how much longer COVID is going to last, what it's going to do to our small businesses, and some of our businesses going to come. Another concern that I have from residents is that they were concerned, what happens if, if the money that we were going to pass for our property tax wasn't enough money? You know, and then we've made a, we collectively said we're going to do our best to keep the services, but we actually don't know that because we didn't have actual numbers. I think moving forward, if you have actual numbers, and we can provide better assurance and know exactly what we need, I, I think we have a better chance of convincing the residents to move forward with something like that.
I just need more input from council. You know, I guess a lot of inputs, not from all council members, but we need to know what are we as a community? The citizens, the volunteers, or the city councils, the community working together. What are we willing to, I don't know, sacrifices or what, right, what are we willing to let go? I heard from council members saying, well, possibly to examine our parks, we need so many parks, we sell our parks. Can we not take up leaps? Can we, you know, look at some other things? So I think, so some of those decisions are made, this may be a good alternative, but I just wanted to throw some ideas out there. There's communities I brought up, I'm sorry.
No, I, when you're done, I want to, I want to ask some people.
That's why I brought up Norton, because, not saying it's, there's no perfect plan, you know, all of them pay taxes. But Norton, they did the rollback, so that helps. They did, they also have a separate higher interest letters, they just continued with, to pay for those salaries. So, you know, every community is a little different in how they generate money. You know, maybe an income tax increase is better, another quarter percent, and we match that, I, I don't know. But then it's, you know, what's going to happen with the, the income tax? People working from home, they may have been affected by the rollback, or the credit up to state law changes, and now they're working from home, that doesn't affect them, they don't pay that one back.
But they may, they may have checked, right?
Well, that's what sacrifices.
What I wanted to say was, if we could go ahead with any of these plans that you presented, that would be all up to council to pass that, you wouldn't be going to the ballot for these things. And I think that's probably the way to go, because actually, we've got a lot more voters this year than we would normally get because of the presidential election. And also, if you see, if you look at the numbers and how badly it failed, I think that in order to go forward, we're going to have to make the decision as to what we do to raise the revenue, to keep the services, and that type of thing. So, and if we're, we are the ones that make the decision, we can also make the decision to draw back and say, you know, we're in better shape now, and... But it's my feeling, just like Bill has brought up about Norton, all the things that they do, those people aren't happy about that, their taxes are asked for not according to them. And you can't satisfy everyone, and it's just like your household. If you need more money, you need more money. If you need more money to buy food and electric and all the things that you need to run a household, this is like running a household, and it's not a bad thing to have more money.
You can't always necessarily get more money, though, if you, if you, then you have to cut somewhere. It, it, it's worse than households.
Right.
I mean, you can't just, you can't get more money, you don't get more money.
So nobody wants to deal away with leaves, nobody wants to deal away with streets, nobody wants to deal away with parks. Yet, they want all of that for, you know, a budget that is, you know, stagnant. We have no revenue. Mr. Heidig?
Thank you, Chair. The mayor, when the mayor was speaking there, it's generally me championing selling off park land and things like ending leaf pickup. You and I have spoken that parks do have a lifespan, and with roughly sixteen parks in this city, there are some that have passed their lifespan, and there is no chance of really bringing them back to the character they were or to the usage they could ever be. I do support looking into identifying which ones those are and somehow bring them asset to us. On the subject of leaf pickup, Mr. Mayor, I'm not sure I ever asked you, or you know, do you know roughly how many communities around us do pick up leaves for their city? do you know roughly how many communities around us do pick up leaves for their city?
I don't, you call it besides my money.
I know that they don't in Norton and Nowford and Clinton, and those communities, because I have friends in those communities, and they all complain that they have to bag them up and, you know.
Well, those, that, picking up leaves costs money.
It does.
That is a, as much as I love to have it in Barbin, it, in my mind, is a luxury, and sometimes, like Mrs. Debevick said, when there is, it's harder to get more money, sometimes you have to cut luxuries. You know, if you have to decide between electric and cable, which one are you going to lose? You know, it's, it's, it's an ugly thing, but there are some things that, you know, are they necessary? Maybe not.
And I think, so to kind of go with both your points, I think if you go to the taxpayers and say, okay, if this doesn't pass for sure, there's going to be no more leaf pickup, well, this, these are the eight things that are going to happen, that's my point. These are the five things that are going to happen. And it doesn't pass, then you have to follow through, and those five things don't happen, and then when it goes back to the ballot, guess what? And that's unfortunately, it's not a what, it's just, it's what you have to do.
It's a reality.
And unless you go to the taxpayer, because, you know, for me, I don't vote for a lot of leaf pickups, but for somebody who lives maybe on, on San Jose, they are, you know, Nassau streets, they, they would pull leaf pickups, they have so many leaves. So, I mean, you have, you have to, it's like picking your luxuries, right? And I think, I just think that that would be an easier sell to the citizens, in my opinion.
I think something that would be an easier sell also that we have never done, and I said, if you looked at all the election results, anybody that wanted a police levy or a fire levy or anything for safety purposes, they got it. We need to put out a police levy for our cars.
Are you referring to sort of like the fire departments' capital levy there?
Yes, yes, we need to do that because they do pass. People do pay for safety courses, and they vote, they vote for them. And we're in real need for police officers, and we always are.
Well, if, if there's, I think the chief and I spoke, if we were to get one or two a year in rotation, it would solve all the problems with the fleet as it is, but that one or two isn't the easiest thing, but it's needed.
So I think like what Bill is saying and what actually all of us are saying with our own ideas is that we can't do business as usual. We have to start thinking about ways that we can fund the things that the city needs to make the city a better place to live. Paying for services is not new to this administration. I mean, it was talked about twenty years ago, about paying for the services. And because when you look at the use, you have an area that has lots and lots of leaves, and you have landscaping companies that come and blow all the leaves out of the street. And they can sit there, you know, if we, if we didn't have, I mean, thank God our crew comes through and picks up those leaves, but you have some streets that you can't even get one car down the street. So it's not necessarily, you know, the residents, but it's the other people that, you know, get their grass cut and everything, and they throw the leaves out, and, and then they go on, they're going to pay for that, and they're going on to another one. So I really think that assessing for snow removal and leaves and that, I don't think we're too far off on that. I, I think that's what this has come down to, because we just can't, the equipment, the backups are so expensive, and hauling and the gas and whatnot, it's like nothing when you stop and think about it. It is a researcher who.
Uh, dig him out.
Um, I, I, I value all of this discussion. I have an executive session scheduled.
Right.
And we have Judge Lanzinger, Judge McKinney, Chief Orver, and an attorney here. And so I, I know that this is exceptionally important discussion, but I hope there's an ordinance pending for this, or if this is just a discussion point. I just wanted to make it clear.
Thank you. I, I was mindful that they were here, but, okay. I think that possibly we should meet in, we should meet about this, maybe not even in council, maybe a retreat or whatever. But since we do have other things to cover tonight, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion. I'll second it.
Okay, motion made by Mrs. Angela and seconded by Mrs. Debevick. And we are adjourned at seven fifty-six.
Take two minutes. We're two minutes. Okay, let's get started. Okay, let's get going here. This is a committee of the whole meeting of Barbin City Council. Today is Monday, November twenty-third, twenty twenty. I call this meeting together at eight P M. Please stand for the flag of the lead.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, and with this law, the liberty of each and every citizen of this world.
Okay, we have a request, and we have guests here, so we are going to go into executive session. A request is made by a dismembered to enter into executive session for the purpose of imminent court action. Having stated that request, I will entertain a motion to enter into executive session of council. Mrs. Debevick.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that we enter into executive session for the purpose of imminent court action.
Thank you. And Mr. Hayden.
Thank you, Mr. President. I will second the motion to enter into executive session pending imminent court action.
And here we go, by Mr. Debevick and seconded by Mr. Hyde to enter into executive session for the purpose of imminent court action. Clerk, please call the roll.
This is Ann Law.
Yes.
This is Coler.
Yes.
This is Debevick.
Yes.
This is Roddy.
Yes.
This is Ritter.
Yes.
This is Rivera.
Yes.
This is Hayden.
Yes.
This is Weaver.
Yes.
This is Debevick.
Yes. Okay, we are in executive session at eight oh three. Okay, I request that all persons not directly involved in this session vacate the chambers. Bring your phones up front.